Get my t-shirt.
What do you want?
Ladies and gentlemen, it is seven o'clock, so I am going to call the meeting to order. And we are going to.
You're all set.
Oh, what the hell? Oh.
You're all set.
Oh, my.
Thank you so much. We are going to move straight to our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. President Burke, members of the board, our retirees, our community. First, I would like to say it's great to see so many of our retirees on our Zoom call this evening. I have been in Warren for about seventeen years and some of you trained me very well at the beginning. So thank you and congratulations to all of you if I don't get a chance to say it later on. It's been a busy month, lots of meetings, obviously preparing for the opening of the 2021 school year. I know our community and parents and students are wondering about what that's going to look like, and we're still working through those plans. As information changes, we do have an upcoming meeting on Friday, June nineteenth, with the Marion County Health Department, the Marion County Superintendent's, and the mayor's office to review let the last month's data. We should have some clear guidance after that meeting. It's my hope to share our plans with our students, staff, and families by the end of June. Today and yesterday have been really great days. We've been participating in the in-person graduation over at Warren PAC. I think we've graduated about five hundred students at this point. With the remaining students will graduate tomorrow. It's been a real nice, personal touch. I do want to give a shout out to Mr. Schepler, the Graduation Commencement Committee, and all of his team for putting together a first-class experience for our students and families. This Friday, I shared in my Wednesday call that this Friday, Warren Township and all Marion County schools will be honoring George Floyd and shedding a light on a dark place of social injustice in our society. All of our football stadium lights will be turned on at ten fourteen. Will be illuminated for eight minutes and forty-six seconds. The June nineteenth date is recognition of the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation, also known as Juneteenth. The ten fourteen time signifies the date that George Floyd was born. And the eight minutes and forty-six seconds represent the amount of time that Officer Chauvin had his knee on Mr. Floyd's neck. As a unified group, all Marion County schools are taking action against social injustice and intensifying our efforts to equitable access and outcomes for our students. Today, we posted a video on our website. I encourage you to look at that. And we will be sharing this on our social media platforms as part of our action plan. I want to take a moment to recognize Carol Graham. Carol is not in the room right now, but Carol is also retiring this year. And I want to thank Carol for training me these last two years as a new superintendent. And I want to thank her for the thirty-nine years that she has dedicated and given to Warren Township. And with that, that is my report.
Thank you so much, Tim. We really appreciate it. I will be moving on to board comments. And I will be starting with Gloria, please. Gloria, you're muted. There we go.
I'm muted. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Hello, everyone. This is a difficult time for the black community, for our families that have lost loved ones due to police brutality and the devastating tragedies occurring in our country, America. However, we are glad to see other communities reaching out and standing up to support us. One songwriter wrote, he wrote the song "God Bless Mary", realizing that we need God to help us through these trying times. Songwriter wrote a song to encourage us. A long time coming, but a change is gonna come. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Lynn?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. This week, I have had the opportunity to go over to the PAC Center along with Dr. Hanson and administration, help pass out diplomas to our 2020 graduates. And while it is different from what we're used to doing, I have to say it's just still a wonderful day of celebration. As we all know, things are a little slower right now. But what this allowed us to do with that traditionally large ceremony was to make it more personal, as Dr. Hanson mentioned earlier. And for the first time this year, I was able to see the individual families that came to watch their student graduate. And I saw signs and flowers and balloons, and I saw real tears from families of joy and happiness. And I think that that is one of the things that I'll really take away and really remember from this kind of non-traditional graduation ceremony. But it just definitely was a truly enjoyable experience, and we get to continue tomorrow with graduating some more of our seniors. So I'm just welcome to everybody, and I'm so excited to hear from our retirees as well this evening. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Lynn. Randy?
Well, excuse me, welcome, everybody, and especially the retirees this evening. Each year, I always start with saying, boy, everything that you've done through the school systems, you will be rewarded, not only now, but the years to come. And I always give the examples and remind people, my mom and dad were both in Warren Township Schools, or I'm sorry, my mother was in Warren Township Schools. My dad was an IPS teacher for thirty-five years. And to this day, other than during this quarantine, when I'm out with him, I'll get all the time, somebody will come up to him and say, Mr. George, here is what you meant to me. And I, you know, they'll leave, and my dad will just smile. I say, Dad, you know, well done, Dad, you know. So with all you teachers, cooks, whatever you are, I'm sure you made big impact, a lot of kids, a lot of people throughout the years. What kind of occupation profession can you get in and say that? It's very unique. And then also, I want to commend everybody, like Dr. Hanson said, and Mr. Schepler. They did great jobs. The speakers did excellent jobs in the virtual ceremony. And, you know, Brian Walker, I think, was his name. He really stuck out to me. You know, he was saying at the end there, he said, hey, he says, it is what it is. You know, what are we going to do about it? We will always be remembered as the class of 2020. We made history. And he made a lot of positives out of negatives. And I really liked that in the other speakers, too. So again, thanks for retirees and everybody for attending tonight.
Thank you so much, Randy. Julie?
Yes, welcome, everybody. I, too, helped at the graduation today, and it was a lot of fun. What I think we also got out of this one is a lot of our exceptional learners who don't normally get to participate in a regular graduation ceremony were able to take part in this ceremony. And it was really nice to get to see some of those kids walking across the stage. It brings us together as one, and it was just amazing. And prior to our board meeting starting, and I hearing everybody chatting and talking to each other, it's nice to see that everybody has this opportunity to see each other once again, and because you're all out there in different places right now. So when you're done, contact each other and get together on Zoom and just have some chats and enjoy yourselves. So I want to thank you all very much for everything you've given to Warren Township. You are amazing. Our kids benefit from everything you have done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Terry?
Good evening, everyone. I see we're all surviving quarantine. Just want to say thank you to all of our retirees. I know personally that some of you, many of you who are on this screen have either worked with my children. And I really appreciate that. I know the Grassy Creek teachers, you'll be proud to hear I now have a nurse in the family. Madison graduated with her degree, and Masing has his forestry from Purdue. So you guys have touched lives and made a difference and helped kids, not just mine, but as I've gone through the community these last couple of weeks and seen the signs in the yards of our 2020 graduates, and I've seen children. I know that all of you had a piece or a part in their lives, and just thank you so much for everything you've done for Warren Township. We appreciate you. You are what makes our kids amazing. You are what makes our kids amazing. That's it.
Thank you so much, Terry. I would also like to echo what Lynn said earlier. Participating in graduation over at the high school has just been a really meaningful and wonderful experience. You're not really sure what it's going to be like until you get there and you see it. And then just as Lynn mentioned, you see the individual families and their tears and their happiness and the woo-hoos and the fact that that kid and student, I guess now adult, really gets that moment to be on that stage and get their diploma and kind of rain and lime light, quite literally, actually. And so it's just been a wonderful experience. And so I am incredibly grateful for the township for being able to work that out and the graduation committee. As other people said, many people on this phone call I recognize. Some of you I knew when I was a little girl in the school system. And it, as much as it breaks my heart that you are leaving, I'm incredibly happy that you get to start a new chapter of your life. And so I hope you all just have a wonderful retirement and that you're able to enjoy it to its fullest. And next on our agenda, we have board correspondence, and my understanding is we do not have any, correct, Julie?
I do not have any, no.
And then we have yellow cards, and both Dr. Hanson and I have checked our emails, and we did not have any either. And so I am going to turn everything over to Brian Simkins so that our retirees can be honored.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Hanson, President Burke, members of the board, Warren community, it's my pleasure, as always, during the June board meeting to honor and recognize our retirees and to congratulate them. We certainly deeply appreciate all your years of service. And I know from talking with many of you, you also frankly get up every day and do what needs to be done to do right by your families. I know many of you care about your families deeply. And I know that's a big part of it, too. So that's to be commended. So congratulations. We really wish you all the best. I know many of you have lots of plans, exciting plans, and some of you don't have any plans, which is cool, too. So at this time, I'd like to read off everyone's names, and these are retirees who go back to just after last school year, but before June thirtieth, before July first, 2019, and then from July first, 2019, to just recently. So when I read off your name, feel free to do a little wave, and you're welcome to say a few words if you wish. So without further ado, I'll get started. Bonnie Jones, food service head cook. There she is.
It's Lawrence, but. Yeah, we're on his emails, so. That's what's going on there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Meg McNamara, teacher. Pam Reynolds, bus driver. Bill Reynolds, bus driver. Angie Wilson, teacher.
Hey, hi, everybody.
Robert Tom Baker Jr., custodian. Tim Bealy, bus driver. Ann Bolman, school psychologist. Deb Bova, teacher. Audrey Bush, I saw Audrey, Audrey, teacher. Bill Bush, teacher. Sherry Camacho, there you go, I see you on my screen. Sherry, congratulations, teacher. Beth Campbell, teacher.
Hi.
Kevin. Kevin Candidate, teacher. Becky Carlton, teacher. Danita Charters, teacher. Jackie Coleman, I see her, Jackie Coleman, teacher. Congratulations. Daryl. And Daryl Craddock, teacher. Sherilyn Dixon, permanent building guest teacher, very loyal employee. Congratulations. Suzie Evans, instructional assistant. Deb Firsch, teacher. Alberta Frutro, bus driver. Marcia Glazer, media secretary. And of course, Carol Graham, administrative assistant. Congratulations, Carol. Pleasure working with you. Melinda Gutschel, custodian. Pam Hearn, principal's secretary. Betty Hurdle, hey, Betty. Registrar. Linda Hill, custodian. Sandy Hutchison, instructional assistant. Oh, Kathleen Heim's instructional assistant. Jane Jackson, teacher. Denise Keever, and bus driver. I saw you, Denise. Way to go. Anna Lander, instructional assistant. Elaine Loftus, I saw you, Elaine, there you are. Teacher. Maureen Mahoney, teacher. Luann Marshall, speech-language pathologist. Pleasure working with you, Luann. Kate Miller, teacher. There she is. Brenda Owen, director of adult education. Christopher Pollak, teacher. Diane Redd is bus driver. I don't know if I see Diane yet. Anne Rennahan, teacher. Sheila Schirmerstein, teacher. I saw Sheila. There she is. Don Steinle, teacher. And Jill Tudor, instructional assistant. And that rounds out our retirees. Congratulations once again to all. And you can certainly in the near future expect a memento coming from us. And so best wishes to all of you. Congratulations.
I just wanted, again, to thank everyone for your years of service. I have them sitting in front of me, and the total number of years of service for people that are retiring this year is one thousand, one hundred, twenty-nine and a half years. There is a lot of value there that cannot really be easily put into words. I know that each and every one of you has touched so many children, so thank you so very, very much. We are so appreciative for your efforts. And we all, I think I can speak for the board and say that we wish you the happiest of retirements.
Thank you.
So thank you so much. We really, really appreciate it. Okay, so less exciting things. We are going to move on to the consent agenda. Let me get my screen sharing going. The consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes, the financial report and payroll claim, the claim register and electronic payments, the year-to-date summary of fund balances. Sorry, just one moment. The human resources report and addendum, as well as the contracts section. So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Terry made the motion, and Lynn seconded it. We are going to do oral votes, and so I will hand that over to Julie. Terry?
Yes.
Rachel? Yes. Randy?
Yay.
Lynn?
Yay.
Gloria?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Passed unanimously. Okay, the consent agenda passes unanimously, and with that, I'm going to turn things over to Tim real quick.
Thank you, board. As part of the consent agenda approval, you have approved our new head boys basketball coach at Warren Central High School. It is my pleasure to introduce and welcome to the Warren family, the Davis family. Deandre Davis will be our new head boys basketball coach, and Deandre and Carlandi, the W looks good on you. And welcome to Warren. And if you'd like to say a few words, we would welcome that.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for.
You're muted.
I'm muted, which is a problem. There we go. Sorry about that, Coach.
No, no worries. I just want to say thank you for allowing us to be a part of the one nation and welcoming our family to your family.
Thank you, and congratulations to the retirees.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us, Mr. Davis. We truly appreciate it, and we are looking forward to having your entire family here. I'm now going to move over to Bob Horwin with our Chartwell's report.
Thank you, Rachel.
If you give me just a second, I will get it shared.
Okay.
There we go. Sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you for having us. Paul Kendall is with me. Paul, can you hear me?
I'm here.
Awesome.
Well, thank you, board, President Burke, Dr. Hanson. As you know, on the Real Direct with Chartwells, and was, you know, about this time last year, we were talking about the contract and opportunity to get here and speak to you more often. But, you know, this was a crazy year like no other. But a great that I'm here now and get the opportunity to talk to you about some of the great things that happened during this school year pre-COVID. And then I let Bob talk to us about some of the things that happened during COVID and and leading up and what looks forward to next year. So excited about that. And if you could go to the next slide, we'll just quick agenda. Is kind of year in review, and the information I'll talk about is kind of pre-COVID. Talk about student choice, the COVID food outreach, and then new initiatives for next year. And go ahead and move on to the next slide, please. So these are some great results, and I couldn't be more excited to share these with you. So when we were in front of you last year, we talked about the need to continue to impact your community, feed more students. And so I think together, we kind of jumped into a new adventure. Two things we did is really focused on food quality and then jumped into CEP as well. So the results are really great, in my opinion. So in my role, I get to see districts throughout the entire state of Indiana, thirty-two districts we partner with now in the state. And I have to tell you, you're among the best, if not the best in the state in these results, and I'm super proud of the work that's happening. It's a joint effort, I have to say, your leadership team, your principals, your teachers, they all buy in to the Chartwells program and help get students into the cafeterias, and it's really making an impact. Some of the things is, we've already had great breakfast participation numbers, but even those increase year over year, which I think was quite impressive because we were already doing a breakfast in the classroom program. We made some enhancements this year, did some hot options, which were new, and really focused in on high school breakfast. And we've seen some great results, up, you know, some significant thirteen percent increase in the high school is astronomical, in my opinion. And I can tell you, thirty-eight percent of participating at breakfast in a high school when it's not breakfast in the classroom is really, really not happening anywhere else in the state. It's just, we've seen an increase in each category, elementary, middle, and high school, which, again, I'm super proud of. I think these results were going to continue to grow as we moved into March and the latter half of the school year. And I'll say what I think also makes these even that much more impressive is these don't take into account for ADA. So this isn't average daily attendance. This is results based on your building population. So these numbers and participation daily are even higher than this. So it doesn't mean we're satisfied and doesn't mean there's not continual work to do. Always want to continue to look at the menu variety and drive initiatives into the buildings. I think we have some great things you're going to see later in the slides. Let Bob talk about those, but I think the real exciting is the new survey coming together at the high school, which I think is going to be a wow factor and can't wait for your students to be able to see that. And so I'll turn it over to Bob for him to share some of the details of what's been happening at Warren.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Thank you for the next slide. So we continue to launch student choice from the high school. We expanded to the all the middle school, intermediate schools. This is, of course, a program where the students get to taste test options and vote, and the winning selection gets chosen to be in their cafeteria for six to eight weeks. So we did that. Again, we were ready to do it for the second time this year, but you know, something called coronavirus happened. But we will continue to market this. This is a huge way for students to get to have a say in what they want to have served in their dining rooms. And the options continue to grow as far as variety. Our culinary team is constantly working on new concepts for us to roll out. So much more to come on student choice once we get back to whatever normal is going to be. I'll figure the next slide. So as you all know, we quickly switched gears in March with the community food outreach. It was just on a I mean, the team, I couldn't be more proud of my team for switching gears in a matter of a day and rethinking how we serve the community. We have seven school locations on Tuesdays and Fridays, serving meals. Two locations on Wednesday evenings, we're serving suppers. Tuesdays and Fridays, we also went to four every complex every day on the buses and worked so well with transportation, their support, and continues to be just wonderful. We are continuing to do this through the summer. And up to date, nearly three hundred thousand meals have been served doing food outreach at these locations. Some new initiatives we have coming. Of course, to me, the most exciting thing is the high school remodel. That picture you see is a real, live picture of the where we're at today at Warren Central High School. It's about eighty-five percent complete. This is something I've been working on for two years, and I'm so excited what it's going to bring to the kids as far as variety and speed of service and just a wonderful place to eat. So there's a, if you haven't been to the high school, there's a preview of it. If you remember what it looked like before, you probably can't even recognize the space, in my opinion, from new paint and all the new fixtures. So the TVs are yet to be installed, we have digital signage, artwork on the walls is coming, and we're going to be ready to roll when the kids come back at the end of July. Some other things we're going to continue to do is the student parent surveys two times a year, student focus groups. We started that and then had come to a. We started that and then had come to a halt. Principal one-on-ones three times a year. I conducted those earlier in the year before coronavirus and this was extremely beneficial, got some great feedback from principals. So we want to do that three times a year, I mean, with the principals one-on-one to, to see what we can do different, do better, how we can help them. And increase menu variety. Again, the student choice, as it continues to grow, it's just going to continue to expand what we can offer to the, to the students. One thing I want to point out, I'm sorry, go back. I don't know if you can see it, but on the very back wall, we brought, we brought cooking out front in our pizza and deli section, so the kids will actually see us cooking fresh. We cooked it fresh before, but it was just in the back. So when you, when you stop by the high school, you need to check out the equipment we've added to the front of the house. It's going to just expand the quality and freshness and variety to the deli and pizza areas out front. Thank you. Next, next slide, please. And just in addition to us feeding the kids every day, over 21,000 meals and snacks a day, we are just so intertwined with, with, with the community and, and are thrilled to be so intertwined with Warren Township. And these are just some examples of all the things that we do, and just want to make sure you are all aware of, of kind of behind the scenes, what we do besides just feed kids every day. And we love doing it. We love outreach, you know, we love to, to get you grand dollars, and we love to support Old Duffel Food Rescue, and et cetera, et cetera. The list goes on. You can see them in front of you. But just thought that was a, a fun thing to share with you today. And with that said, I'll turn it back over to Paul.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate that. And Board, I appreciate the opportunity, Dr. Hanson, to, to be able to speak to, to you this evening. You know, the partnership has just been so successful for us, and, and, and we see the results in Warren Township. And we really appreciate the consistency of the administration and the board to challenge us to not be satisfied with status quo and to continue to elevate our, our game. And so we think it's mutually beneficial, and just wanted to see if there's anything I can answer, any questions you have. But also thank you, and also say congratulations to the 2020 graduates that you're having today and tomorrow, and also to the, all the 2020 retirees. I look forward to that day sometime myself, probably not in the near future, but, you know, hope not too distant future. But I'll take any questions that Bob and I can hand against a thank you so much for the partnership.
Hello. I, I don't have a question this evening for you, but I do want to just commend you and your team. I volunteered several of the food distribution sites, and I just didn't know what to expect when I arrived, but it was very organized, very safe, and it just, it was a good experience. And I felt like the families sincerely appreciated all the effort that was put into that delivery system. So thank you for, for reinventing how to deliver food to people so quickly, and that is making a difference for our community. So thank you.
Thank you. We're extremely proud.
Anyone else on the board have any comments that they wanted to make?
Oh, I just, I'm sorry. I wanted to make one more comment. Will we be making arrangements to come by and check out those pizzas like in person once that line gets going?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Well, I had to be the one to ask that, so.
I got you covered.
All right.
Gloria, you had a comment?
Oh, I just want to congratulate them on the distribution of the food to our young people during this difficult time. I just really think that they did an awesome job.
Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Okay, so thank you, Paul and Bob. We really appreciate your time, and as others have said, we really appreciate your efforts on just turning instantly in one day and all of a sudden figuring out how we could feed people best. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are going to move on to action items, and our first action item is gifts and grants. And so I would like to entertain a motion to accept gifts and grants.
And make a motion.
Was that Gloria?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And Terry seconded it. So is there any discussion? If not, Julie, could you take a vote?
Terry?
Yay.
Rachel?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Gloria?
Yes.
And I have to abstain, so it passes unanimously.
Thank you so much, Julie. The next item on our agenda, that's the item after that, the next item in our agenda is Resolution 580.20. It is a resolution that authorizes the suspensions of policies and procedures that are in conflict with current law. This is a resolution that ISDA and our attorneys have recommended that we pass in regards to, this is very specifically in regards to the current crisis that has to do with coronavirus going on in our country, and just to make sure that we are following, of course, the laws and emergency orders that are coming out first. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Lynn has made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I heard Julie first, so we will go with Julie. Is there any discussion?
Oh, yeah. I wanted to ask, discuss about suspend all policies and procedures that are in conflict when any waivers or extensions granted by the, the governor. Can you talk a little bit about that, Rachel?
So I, I, my first guess, and I'm going to have Tim correct me if I'm wrong, is one example like that would be the governor waived the 180 school days and set into motion that we would use a certain number of virtual days in last year's calendar. And so it's in regards to situations like that. Tim, is that correct?
Yes. For us, it would also be testing, executive orders that remove the expectation of state testing. And we don't know what's going to be down the road, so this kind of protects us down the road as well.
Gloria, does that answer your question?
Well, I'm still a little unclear about it, but, you know, I'll just abstain until I can get further clarification.
Okay, well, in that case, if there's no other discussion, Julie, if you could call a vote.
Terry?
Yay.
Rachel?
Yay.
Randy?
Yay.
Lynn?
Yay.
Gloria?
Substain.
And I say yay. It passed with one extension.
Okay. Thank you so much. Our last resolution, but not our last action item for the day, has to do with affirming Black Lives Matter. The resolution was presented to the board earlier today. I'm sorry about the delay. We've worked pretty hard on this. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Randy, go ahead.
I'll second it. Okay, I've got Randy making the motion and Julie seconding it. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Julie, could you take a vote?
Terry?
Yay.
Rachel?
Yay.
Randy?
Yay.
Lynn?
Yay.
Gloria?
Yay.
And I'm a yay. It passes unanimously.
I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege here and thank everyone for voting that, on that, and thank Gloria for helping me put it together. I really truly appreciated your efforts. Gloria, if you wanted to say something, feel free. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
And I, I am so happy you stopped me because thank you so much for that. But I feel so awkward right now, and I am so sorry. When I took a deeper look at what you were saying about the resolution prior to the, you know, about the suspension, is it my understanding that it is saying that regardless of some of the different restrictions that we had, that, you know, if the governor give us permission to do certain things, then we will be gladly accept? Or, or are we saying that if the governor suggests stuff, that we will fight what he's saying?
No, it is that if the governor passes or puts out an emergency order saying something such as the emergency order that removed testing from the end of last year, that we would follow it.
Oh, okay. Well, I apologize to all of you. I didn't have a clear understanding, that's why I sustain, but I would like to change mine to a yay.
I've got it.
Okay. Thank you so much. And again, thank, sorry, thanks to everyone for both of those resolutions. I feel that they are both very important, dealing with the two crises we currently have going on in the country. And I just truly deeply from the bottom of my heart, thank the rest of the board for their votes today. And with that, sorry about the awkward lead-in, Allison. I will go to you.
I'm not awkward at all. President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board and the community. I'm here, well, I was here last month to talk about the Student Success Handbook. And there have been a couple of changes that should have been shared with you since I last talked. I know Lynn shared with me, I have a spelling mistake on page nine, so that will be corrected. But we also have our attorneys reviewed, and based on your input from our last meeting, we have a couple of considerations for you guys to look at tonight. So you asked for some information about attendance. Our attorneys provided us with this statement for attendance, which really opens up attendance to be more than just sitting in a classroom physically in a brick and mortar building. So if we are doing e-learning days, if a parent chooses to do an online school, that all of those can count towards attendance as well, and whatever the participation is of that schooling, that, that would count. The second one is a statement about where updates can be found, both that we will communicate through school newsletters and also on our website. I felt like more than just posting on our website, we should be sharing that through school newsletters, so families can see that as well. And then here are two recommendations from our attorneys. They recommend that we switch the residency verification and then the residency guidelines, that it would be clear for our families to understand what was required for residency and then how we verified it. And then we were really excited to change the word guardian to caregiver. But there is, in a couple of scenarios, for example, in FERPA, I believe it was, where you have to be a legal guardian to be able to access certain things. And so this will just be a statement that we'll put at the front of the book, probably with that update area, just saying that really caregiver encompasses that a parent guardian encompasses all those things and, and how it's defined. So we can continue to use caregiver and we don't have to. The other option would be is that in every single one of those areas where we had to really clarify it, we'd have to clarify that separately in a number of different areas. So this is more of an overarching option. So those were the only changes in addition to the recommendations from last time. So I'm happy at this time, if you guys have any questions or comments about any of those things.
So I can see people, sorry. Do any board members have any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you, Allison, for all the work you've put into this. It's a lot of work. Lynn, thank you for, for telling her about that spelling. I caught it too, but I hadn't caught, contacted her yet, so. But you did, you guys have done an amazing job. That is a lot of work, and you do it every year to keep us straight and right and, and everything. So thank you so much for all your work.
Yeah, I have a great team that works on it, and I'm proud to say that we have a number of other school districts that use ours. I've come across a couple in the last year where I opened it up and I said, wait, this is ours. So I, I'm proud that people are using ours as an example.
That's good.
So Julie, I have to say, poor Allison just happened to pop in at the graduation the other day, and we had a lull for a minute, and I saw her and I go running over to her to tell her about that. I said, I haven't emailed you yet, but I'm so glad that I got to see you. So thanks, Allison, for all your hard work on that. Appreciate it.
And I would like to say, Allison, I appreciate your hard work. What really inspired me was to see the word caregiver, because we have so many children that may not have their natural parents to raise them, but there are people that love children, and they step in and they assume the role of trying to provide care and love to them. So I'm happy that they will not have any conflict when they come to the school because they are the caregiver of the children. So that was a great choice of words. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, seeing no other comments, could I have a motion that specifically includes the changes?
I make a motion.
Is there a second? Okay, so that's Gloria making the motion and Terry seconding it. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to hand it over to Julie.
Terry?
Yay.
Rachel?
Yay.
Randy?
Yay.
Lynn?
Yay.
Gloria?
Yay.
And I'm a yay too. And it passes unanimously.
Okay, well, now you get to make all those updates permanent. So thank you so much, Allison, for your time. I really appreciate it. We currently have no discussion items on the agenda, making sure from the faces in the room that that is not changed. Okay, we're good. And so with that, we are going to go to closing comments, and I will start with Gloria.
Well, I, I'm so happy I'm first this time. I would like to first of all, thank Rachel, our president. Many of you might not know that she does a lot of work behind the scene and before we have these board meetings. And I just want to thank her for all of her hard work and just wanted to know that we see you and we appreciate you. And also, I would like to thank all of our retirees for doing such a great job all these years. We're going to miss you, but we know it's time for you to enjoy your life, so we will say, enjoy yourself and make up for all the years that you could do a lot of things. This is your time to really do what you want to do right now. And to our graduates, oh my gosh, congratulations. We are so proud of you. And I want you to make sure that you make all your dreams a reality, and remember that success can be yours if you just believe. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gloria, and thank you, Gloria, on a personal note. Thank you. Lynn? Lynn, you just muted yourself instead of unmuting yourself.
I think I know how to do this by now. I apologize. So I've been, you know, really quiet on social media about a, a lot of the things that are going on right now, but I just want to say just something. 19 years ago, my husband and I made the decision to move here to the east end of Indianapolis, knowing that our children would be attending Warren Township schools. The diversity in our township is incredibly amazing, and I'm confident that this diversity has made a very positive and profound impact on my family. As a board member, a member of this board, I just want to make this promise that I will do everything I can to eliminate racial prejudice within Warren Township. And please know that when I make decisions regarding important issues in all of our schools, that I will treat students and staff and parents and administrators equally and fairly. So I just kind of wanted to say something about that. And again, congratulations to all of our retirees and our graduates. I look forward to attending again tomorrow. We'll miss you, but you'll always be part of the Warren family. So again, thanks for joining us tonight, and good evening, everyone.
Thank you so much, Lynn. Randy?
Ditto Gloria and Lynn. Both of you, well done. Good. Ditto, Gloria and Lynn. No, I did, both of you, well done. Good job. Again, I want to congratulate all the teachers, the, everybody that's retiring, all the cooks, janitors, custodians, everybody, well done and go on and be proud and listen and smile when everybody tells you great jobs and what you meant to them. And then also the, the food outreach program, great to the whole Warren Township community, everybody that's been involved. And I know you guys have done great, great jobs of continuing to feed and be there. And it just makes me proud, this warrior nation. That's why, what Lynn said, she's been here 17 years. I was thinking, I've been here, really, I graduated in 82 and then I went to college and everywhere else. I came back in 95 with my wife and I married her and we stayed the side. So, we're very proud and it will continue. Thanks again.
Thank you so much, Randy. Julie?
I'm going to be a little wordy. I have been doing a lot of thinking on this and I wrote out some comments and thoughts. And I'm, normally when I talk at comment time, it's to, you know, the teachers and the administrators and board members and even the children when they're there. Today, I want to talk to you, board members. It feels like a very long time since I've seen you all virtually, even though it's only been about two weeks ago in our last meeting. Who could have ever imagined everything that's gone on in the last three to four months? And I have been trying to process all of it, the facets, all the facets, and there are many. I think for some of us, it is very cut and dry, but for others of us, and I fall into this category, it just feels so, so involved. As a child, I was sheltered by my parents. They gave me the gift of a childhood, one that I can remember playing kick the can with my friends out on the streets of the neighborhood without a care in the world. I attempted to carry on this with my children. I sheltered them and I hopefully gave them the same gift of a childhood that my parents gave me. And I see my daughter doing the same for my granddaughter. I believe that is every parent's right. Whether they take that opportunity or not is up to them, but they should at least have the ability to do this. When I was growing up, my parents weren't rich by any means, but I would say my childhood was very rich. In the same time, I hope this is true for my children. It breaks my heart when I see stories on Facebook of parents who probably, like me, shelter their children, having to talk to their black and brown sons when they start reaching puberty about things like, if you're going out in the evening, do not walk in anyone's yard. Do not carry anything that might resemble a gun or a weapon. Well, there just went there, that little boy's ability to go out and kick dirt and toss sticks around. And then, as they get a little older, the conversations about it become, if you get pulled over, make sure your hands are on your steering wheel and so on and so forth. And the children in these examples just lost their gift of a childhood when their parents, out of necessity, had to talk with them about these things at young and tender ages. What does that say about us as a society? I think as we need, I think as a society, we need to have some very serious conversations and then take some appropriate actions to break down systemic racism that abounds. And this is where it gets tricky though, because with all that being said, the ones being criticized the most are our police officers. And I do believe we have some amazing, amazing officers. I know of a police officer who helps every Wednesday at our food distribution at Morehead. We have our very own Warren School Resource Officers that pride themselves on building relationships with our students. And I know there are a lot of caring IMPD officers out there that do their jobs with amazing care and compassion, one of which, who just recently lost her life, life, was loved by many, many of us on the east side. But that doesn't mean that racism doesn't exist in those entities. You know, when we moved into Warren Township, like Lynn, we were very deliberate in choosing our district. There were two main reasons. One, I won't go into, that we chose Warren Township because it really has nothing to do with this. But the other was for the diversity. I knew that this would play a very important role in my child's growth into amazing young adults. And I wasn't disappointed. All three of them are amazing young adults. And they look back at Warren as, as being a time they are proud of. We in Warren have never complained about the obstacles set before us. We are resilient. We adapt and we overcome challenging situations. And in fact, it's this resilience that is one of the skillsets we want our students to learn on the journey of a graduate. If there is any group of people that can overcome and conquer this, it is our Warren Township community. But we, as school board members, need to play a significant role in the leadership of this daunting task. We need to start considering community dialogues that will encourage everyone to take part in this and take ownership in it. Because I don't believe it can be done if we don't include and listen to our community members. We really need to do that. We need to make sure our actions are constructive. We can, we can be passionate about a topic, but we need to remember not to tear down our team members and cause hurt feelings because that will only get in our way of doing what needs to be done. Systemic racism is an emotional topic for all, and everyone is coming at it from all different directions based on where they come from and their walk of life. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but as I said before, Warren has never complained about obstacles set before us. We, in this time, in these times of a new normal, will just have to make it a new, new normal. One where we can feel our children are both safe health-wise and as well as social, emotional-wise. I hope very soon that when I see a parent on Facebook talking about having to have that talk with their child that is growing up, it's not about how to stay alive, but about the other talk the parents dread having. And as I said before, we ask ourselves, is it in the best interest of the children? I ask you now, is it in the best interest of all the children of Warren Township if our minorities, including our black and brown children, do not have the same advantages and opportunities as our other children? Just one last thing to say, can we take this on? Because it is inevitable that this is in the best interest of all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julie. Terry?
Julie, you took some of what I was going to say and you actually, when I was thinking about what I was going to say, you brought me to tears. But speaking from the heart and being an inner-city, any inner-city teacher and being on our board, and I want everybody to know that we are committed to change inequality for all of our students. I feel like it's important for us to break down the barriers and to be present in today's society and start making the change and stand up in our community and support our community. I just love Warren. We moved here for lots of reasons. And I, I'm not ashamed of where I come from and where my kids come from. I wear the W with pride.
Thank you, Terry. That leaves myself. So, I wrote some stuff and then I got rid of it and I wrote some stuff and I got rid of it. So, hopefully this will be okay. Like Lynn and Julie, I very specifically chose to move here as an adult. Like Randy, I went to Warren Schools as a child. And I moved back to make sure that my children would grow up in a world and go to school in a world that reflected the world around them that was purposely diverse. I believe that that was one of the greatest gifts I could give my children. But I am unique on this board, though not unique among residents of this township, in that I attended Warren Central in the 1992, 1993 school year, which was the year that we had the riot. It was the year that we did not have school on Friday because every Friday at school, we did have school. It would cut, it would close real early so that teachers could receive professional development on race and race relations. And many, many things have changed in those 27 years. But we are not where we need to be, and I don't think there's anyone who would say we are. What we know is that systemic racism has occurred in this country for at least 400 years. The first slaves were brought over on a ship 401 years ago. And ever since that moment, and in fact, before that moment, racism has existed here in a very deliberate way that has, and it has continued, and there are innumerable things between redlining and purposeful districting that you can look at that have continued, that have made that systemic and generational. What we know is that since the Menendez decision, students are still separated by what language they speak. And we know statistically that since Brown versus Board, schools are actually now more segregated than they were when Brown was originally passed by SCOTUS years ago. In the education system, we have an absolute obligation to make sure that we recognize within the system what racism exists and fight to get rid of it and fight to make things better and fight for our children. That is the absolute obligation that all educators have. And as a board, that is, that is the obligation we must take on and we must embrace. And we must be, it must be in our faces at all times. Julie took some of what I was going to say about community dialogues. We need to really make sure that we are listening and talking to parents and students and finding out how we can help them make sure that their child has the best educational experience possible. We need to go to them and we need to get those questions answered, and they are not questions that we can answer. Two more things. It's important to name names. Tim actually opened the meeting by naming names. I just have a few. We need to remember Trayvon Martin and we need to remember Breonna Taylor. We need to remember Richard Brooks and Sandra Bland and Eric Gardner and Annie Mae Collins, Ricky A Boyd, Philandra Castile and George Floyd. And there are so many more names, but we need to remember the names and we need to say them because there's power in admitting what we're fighting. And we need to do what we do for all of our children, for those adults and for those children. And, okay, I can get through this. It is June and June is Pride Month. And so, the important thing, I think, that most of the Pride community has embraced about this particular June is that the Stonewall riots were started by a black woman, a black transgender woman, started the Stonewall riots, which has really led to the great change that's happened in the country, really LGBTQ community. And they have really set aside June to look at combining Black Lives Matter and how black people have really affected the LGBT community. And so, I would like to thank both of those communities for their hard work and for all of their protests. And please know that you are being heard. And with that, I'm going to stop the meeting. Sure.
Can I say one last thing? I just want to say that, you know, I feel good about the comments that I've heard from all of you because, you know, as a black representative on the board, it's good to know that you understand how we feel in the black community. You understand the problems that's facing us and you understand that there need to be a change. And you understand that, you know, instead of just words, it's time for us to put action behind our words. And that's what I hear you saying. And, you know, on behalf of the black community, that's a step in the right direction. And I want to say that I appreciate you for understanding and having compassion on us and trying to work with us on trying to come up with a solution to put an end to this, you know, systemic racism that's going on. I would like to say thank you very much.
Okay. And with that, I will call us closed. Thank you all for your time. Board members that are online, I'm going to send you a text message. You have some paperwork you need to sign, so remember that. And I will see you all in a couple of weeks. Thank you.